Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome members of council, staff, and members of the public to our June 24th council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk Deputy Operations, for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship, Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara. Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Counsel Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Lucely.
Present.
And that is quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land, the Chipewa, the Odawa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred collectively as the Anishnapec. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with the Huron Treaty, number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I'd like to request that council declare conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork.
And thank you, your worship. I do have conflicts filed by both Deputy Mayor Field and Counselor Hyatt that they will speak to at that time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. But before we do that, there's a couple adjustments I'd like to make, so I'd like you to adopt the agenda as amended. First of all, the auditor, Mr. Gavini Spatafora, our auditor, will not be here tonight as listed on the agenda. Number two, Barb Prescott, the town crier, is unable to attend and will not be present tonight. But I'd like to add the third one, which is a certificate of recognition 150 from Mayor Rick Maloney from the town of Bracebridge. So I'd like to ask for a mover to seconder to adopt the agenda as amended. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to adopt the agenda as amended of the June 24, 2024, regular session of council.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the review and adoption of the minutes of a regular council meeting held on May the 27th. I'll ask for a move and a second to put those minutes on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to adopt a circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on May 27, 2024.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council? Errors or omissions? Yeah, Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
Did we miss the Indigenous land?
Uh, no, we've had that.
Because we did.
Yes, okay.
Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the moment of reflection. I'll ask everyone to please stand, please. That will take us to the roundtable announcements. And first on my list is Counselor Welsh, please.
Um, on June the 12th, the Conservation, the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority held an open house to answer any questions, or open house in Bridgetown Park to answer questions about their conservation land strategy. And you can actually comment on that until July 14th, and I would encourage everybody to go and have a look at that on their website. And, um, of course, I asked them a whole bunch of questions that they were happy to answer specifically about all the trees that keep dying in the park.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Welsh. We'll go to Deputy Mayor Fields, next on my list, please.
Thank you, through your worship. I attended the Indigenous Garden opening on the weekend, and very well done. I want to thank Mandy and Larissa and, um, uh, everyone that organized it. I think it was done very well, very professional. Tended the RCMP musical ride, and it was nice to see so many staff and council members out there. And congratulations to the Petroya Enerskill and Agricultural Society on organizing such a great event. It was very impressive. And I had the honor of, uh, you know, we're giving out a lot of certificates during the 150. I had the honor of presenting the mayor and his lovely wife with 50 years of marriage. So Brad was older and Wendy must have been very young, so congratulations on that. Thank you.
And I did not sign that certificate.
No, I wouldn't let him.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. They will move on. Next on my list is Counselor Clark, please.
I have nothing that hasn't already been said or will be said shortly by yourself, I believe.
I will be adding. You're right. Counselor Hyatt.
I have nothing to share, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Patel.
Thank you. Um, I attended the opening of the market. They have yet to fail on their opening and their ability to have so many different vendors, and the smells and sounds are always very welcoming. I've tried to attend as many things in the community. There's a lot of buzz and a lot of excitement. With response to certificates, I had the privilege of presenting my aunt with a certificate given by the mayor for her 95th birthday. She was very honored and very excited that the mayor would take the time to present that, and it is a definite highlight in her life, a very long life. So I was very pleased to make that presentation on your behalf. So just congrats to everyone, and always back to Larissa for all the planning with your team to kick off, which is going to be a long year, but so far, it's just been amazing. So great job.
Thank you, Counselor Patel, and it was my pleasure, by the way. Now bear with me, council, because some of this is repetition that's already been said. It's been a very busy few weeks for me. I attended the Blue Water Power Shareholders Meeting in Sarnia on Wednesday, May 29th. We received very good news, and Blue Water Power had another most successful year. Mr. Charlebois, CEO of Treasure, was also in attendance with me. I also attended the retirement party for Ms. Janice Moore in Sarnia on Thursday, May 30th. Janice has worked with the city of Sarnia for over 50 years. It was a good event and well organized. I attended the Blue Water Power Annual General Meeting in Petrolia at Victoria Hall on Thursday, May the 30th. It was a good meeting, and at the end, they presented the town a check for $15,000 to go towards our 150 celebrations. Mr. Charlebois, CEO of Treasure, was also in attendance. Special thanks to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts, and Communication, for preparing and arranging that event. I attended Pizza Fest on Saturday, June 1st, and I feel it was a great success. Congratulations to Ms. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts, and Communication, Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation, councilors, all the municipal staff that took part, the many volunteers, service clubs, scouts, and bands for a great day. Also, special thanks to all the sponsors that made that event possible. I also attended the Lampton College Convocational Ceremony on Tuesday, June the 4th, 2024. The speaker was Dr. Erin Courtney, Facility Bachelor of Science, Nursing Program, School of Nursing, and it was a great event, great success. I attended County Council on Wednesday, June 5th, and met with Heritage Champions. That included Counselor Liz Wells, who was unable to attend prior to our county council meeting. Congratulations to Counselor Liz Wells as a Heritage Champion. Congratulations. I attended the Women of Excellence at the Donnie Club on Thursday, June the 6th. That included Laura Pickel Kitmer, Erin Miller-Hyrellick, Emily Bright, Emily Denham-Weed, involved with the Parents for Parks that raised money and sought out donations to build an accessible playground at Greenwood Park. I apologize if I didn't pronounce those names properly. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO of Treasure, Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities, were also in attendance. Congratulations to the ladies involved. It was fun, and we'll deal with this later on in the agenda. I attended the Strawberry Social on Sunday, June the 9th, at the farmer's market with all the money raised to go to our local CEE hospital. I met a number of individuals that I had not seen for a long time. It was a good time enjoyed by all. Deputy Mayor Field and Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO of Treasure, were also in attendance that I'm aware of. I also attended a check presentation on Monday, June the 10th, at Victoria Hall, where the IODE President Don McNally presented a check in the amount of $5,000 to go towards the band shell in Victoria Park. Great news for the town of Petrolia, and I want to thank all the staff involved in setting that up. Thank you for that. I attended the Nickel Scholarship Selection Committee at LCCVI on Wednesday, June the 12th. Congratulations to Mr. Colin Haskins, Ms. Abigail Jin, Ms. Rihanna Van Stemford, Mr. Tyler McGrail, and Mr. Nolan Patchett in obtaining the Nickel Scholarship for $10,000 US each. I also attended the Nickel Reception in the amphitheater at LCCVI to meet the winners of the Nickel Scholarship and family on Thursday, June 13th. It was a wonderful event. I took part and spoke on behalf of the town and staff at the LCCVI graduation ceremonies in the main gymnasium on Thursday, June the 13th. It was a full house and a great event. I attended the barbecue hosted by our MPP Bob Bailey along with Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO of Treasure, on Thursday, June 13th at the Lions Hall. It was a good event, great food, and MPP Bob Bailey also entertained us by singing a few songs. I attended the RCMP musical ride in Greenwood Park on Saturday and Sunday, June 15th and 16th at 2:00 PM, and brought greetings on behalf of the council and staff of Petrolia. Special thanks to the Petroya Enerskill and Agricultural Society, Mrs. Judy Crawl, Mr. Doug Crawl, the committee organizers, staff volunteers, sponsors, and all those behind the scenes. Your efforts are truly appreciated. Deputy Mayor Field and Councilors Clark, Hyatt, and O'Hara were also in attendance on Sunday for pictures. It was an outstanding performance and a sold-out crowd on both days. I attended the Provincial Town Criers Dinner at Lola's and the Cabaret at Victoria Hall on Saturday, June 25th, and brought greetings on behalf of the town and staff. I also thank Mrs., I would also like to thank Mrs. Barb Prescott, our very own Mr. Les Whiting and his wife Karen, who emceed the event, the committee organizers, the 150 committee, volunteers, and sponsors who worked tirelessly to make this event a great success. I received gifts from the town criers, from the mayors of each community, with the books to be donated to our local library. Mr. Les Whiting, who was the emcee, also presented gifts he made to each crier that took part in the event. It was a good time by all. And believe me, the town criers really didn't care who won the event. They were all having so much fun. I attended a committee of the whole meeting of county council on Wednesday, June 19th, and a morning reception with MPP Bob Bailey and MPP Steve Pincino, and I will continue to keep council informed. I also attended the Lampton County Audit Committee meeting on Wednesday, June 19th, and heard the presentation from the auditors. I attended the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board meeting on Wednesday, June 19th, at the Lampton OPP Headquarters, and will again keep council informed. I also attended the Indigenous Friendship Garden Recognition Event in Victoria Park on Saturday, June 21st, and spoke on behalf of council and staff. Deputy Mayor Field, Councilors Clark, Welsh, and Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO of Treasure, were also present. It was a good event. Special thanks to Mrs. Ellsworth, Director of Mark's Arts and Communication, Mrs. Tara Wagner, Marketing and Special Events Associate, Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, and the 150 committee. It was a good event. I'd also like to just mention, I attended the grand opening of the farmer's market on May 25th, and Mrs. Pearson, the Director of Legislation, Legislation Clerk, Deputy Operations, Mrs. Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts, and Communication, Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation Facilities, and I also wanted to thank them for their involvement, and the sponsors. We had the Farmers of Ontario, Art Grimath Farms, the, for eggs, and Heidi's Grocery Store, and it was a great success. I hope I got that right, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you. I'd like to move on now to the update from the different committees. We first have the Petroya Heritage Advisory Committee for the, a verbal, and I'll ask Counselor Welsh for her verbal report, please.
So the usual items took place where we discussed the Hillsdale Cemetery Tour and the restoration of the North Street Cemetery, and we've also decided we will participate in Doors Open on September the 21st with the Corey Room and perhaps some other local places.
Can you address that to me, please? Youth, the Petroya Youth Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Patel or Counselor Hyatt, which one of you would like to take the lead? On hand. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, thank you. So just a general meeting, we set up a few subcommittees, talk about the YES event that will take place in spring of 2025 as opposed to fall of 2024, and then just some discussions regarding the color run that is up and coming this weekend, so.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go back. I missed that. Counselor Welsh, would you like to move the motion regarding your verbal report, the acceptance?
Yep.
Okay, moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you, your worship. And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive the verbal update on the Petroya Heritage Advisory Committee.
Any questions from council? If not, all of us in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Now we'll just move on to, we've also received the report from Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion regarding the Petroya Youth Advisory Committee, please.
Would you like me to read it before a move and seconder?
Oh, no, I need a move and a seconder. Thank you for that. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive the verbal update on happenings of the Petroya Youth Advisory Committee.
Any questions from council? All those in favor? That motion carries. We'll move on to the Municipal Services and Traffic Committee. I'll ask for Counselor Hyatt for his report, please.
Okay, thank you. Just a few things to point out here. Sidewalk construction on Maple and Garfield, sidewalks are done. It looks like they did a lot of restoration work today. Almost all the sod is in, so, uh, you know, I live back in that area. I've seen lots of people using the sidewalks, so I think a pretty good improvement was put forth. Looking forward to seeing what we've got on schedule for next year. Tank Street, ditches, I believe are complete. Drainage work also complete. Working on putting base layer down for the roads, so well on its way as well. Compost area was open on the weekend. I had a few things, bags to drop off. The gentleman back there, working quite efficiently and getting people moving in and out. There was probably, you know, 15 vehicles back there when I was there, so, uh, service that's being utilized. And some road resurfacing, R1, R2 projects on First Ave and around the market area also have been completed, so, and they, I think they look great, so.
That's a great report, thank you, and it's nice to hear things moving along like that. Would you like to move that motion before you? Verbal report move, okay, by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to receive and file Counselor Hyatt's update on Petroya Municipal Services happenings.
Any questions from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. We'll go to Planning and Development, and we have Deputy Mayor Joel Field, please, go ahead.
Um, thank you, your worship. We have, right now, we have 12 active plans of subdivision, site plans in various stages. It's likely, has the potential to be in one of the busiest committees and definitely has a lot of stuff. There's not a lot that we can say right now because each one of them is in different stages at different places. There will be public meetings as needed as we just had before this one, so, um, you know, 12 plans of subdivision is pretty major, so, but.
Certainly is. That's great news for the town. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Would you like, Deputy, yeah, would you like to move that motion? Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on planning and development happenings.
Any questions from council? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll move us on to correspondence. I'd like to ask for a motion, a move and a seconder for A to F, and we're excluding F1 and 3. We'll deal with them separately.
And your worship, my apologies on that correction, it's excluding D1 and 3.
Okay, so it's D1 and 3.
The motion will be to exclude D1 and 3.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll ask for a move and a seconder. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to receive and file correspondence 11A through F, excluding D1 and 3.
Any questions from council? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Through you, just a question here on the, on the AMO reports, there's AMO Bill 200 update, but amongst that, it also talks about Bill 185. So I'm just wondering how Bill 185 changes impact our DC bylaw that shall be coming into effect.
I'll ask the clerk to speak to that, please.
Yeah, certainly, very interesting changes that came out of that. Actually, we will have a, a full report coming through Kareen Nada, who is the interim manager of planning, that is forthcoming to our council, but also that does take a number on our DC charges as noted, and we will be reporting back to council on that. We do have a meeting with BM Ross to further address that. But as outlined in that bill amendment, um, some major changes are now in force and effect.
Counselor Hyatt, do you have a rebuttal? Are you okay with that?
That was good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, please.
All right. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Hyatt.
Uh, second is in the Seniors Advisory Committee, there's, uh, there's a lot of discussion in it about the intercommunity, intercommunity transportation. One of the line items talks about a letter being sent out to each of the municipalities telling them whether they would support intercommunity transportation or not. When I attended the Youth Retention Summit, when I attended the Youth Retention Summit in Sarnia, it was also a comment that was brought up by the youth of Petroya, specifically that there was no transportation available, options for them to get to Sarnia, et cetera. So my question really is just, have we received the letter and have we replied to said letter?
I can start with that, and I'll ask Mr. Charlebois to speak to that as well. The county has been dealing with that. There's definitely a need, and I think they've applied for a grant of $50,000 to help proceed with this, but I'll, I know there's been different meetings, and I'll ask Mr. Charlebois to speak to that, please.
Yes, through you, your worship, yeah, we did get the letter from the county, and it's, and we put our full support behind it of the town. And the, I'm actually on a committee with the Chamber of Commerce on transportation, all modes of transportation, including an intercommunity one, and the county rep is Jason Coles, and he's leading that, and they're looking to apply for a grant and hoping to do, they're gonna do a big study in the fall, they hope, on the feasibility of doing this, and then ideally applying for a potential grant, help fund it for a few years, yeah.
Just so unclear, so we did send a letter of support, so we did send that letter. Thank you.
And through your worship, our advisory member is also present in, in chambers tonight. Should there be any other additional questions?
Thank you. Counselor Welsh.
Need a comment about the seniors advisory committee minutes also. I attended on behalf of my workplace, the age-friendly exposition, and it is extremely, extremely well-attended, and the town of Petroya should probably have a presence there as we do have a significant senior population.
Okay, thank you. All right. Can we approve that?
Uh, we have the floor. We just need, that is, to receive and file A through F, excluding D1 and 3. We just need to call the motion, your worship.
Okay, so we've got, I'll call a motion, all those in favor of the correspondence, opposed, that motion carries. So now we'll go to D1. Need a move and a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Hyatt.
Oh, sorry, I have to declare a conflict.
Oh, okay. Note that Counselor Hyatt declared a conflict, and due to what fact?
Family number that provides support for any else.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll go on now. I need a move and a seconder, if anyone wants to speak to that. Counselor Patel, are you moving? Or did you want to speak to that first? Moving? I'll need a second, seconded by Counselor Welsh, and that's in regards to the, the Sarnia UNDRIP Committee Statement? Is that correct regarding the town of? Is that the same one?
Yes, worship, yes.
Okay, Blue Water Mountain, okay? Any questions from council regarding that motion on the floor?
This is under, correct? Under, UND, he just spelled without U-N-D-R-I-P, yes.
I'll ask the clerk to read that motion then, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, at request of the city of Sarnia through correspondence dated June 14th, 2024, to support the Sarnia Undrip Committee and support the Omjinong First Nations' efforts in addressing the ongoing environmental issues impacting their community.
Any discussion from council? A call, a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the second one. You've got the motion listed there. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor, and we'll also note that Counselor Hyatt returned to his seat, or his chair. Need a move and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to support the city of Belleville's resolution dated May 13th, 2024, and that confirmation of the town's support resolution before we did a premier Doug Ford, MPP Bob Bailey, and the city of Belleville, and all municipalities in Ontario.
Any questions from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us down now to correspondence. We have a request from Steppin' Up Dance Company for chalk-the-walk portion of kids' art near the park, and you've got a motion in front of you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to approve Steppin' Up Dance Company's chalk-the-walk request for July 13th, 2024.
Any discussion from council? They'll call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the delegation, and as I'd stated at the start of the meeting, both the audit and Mrs. Prescott will not be on this agenda. The only third item I have that I want to bring to your attention is a certificate of recognition from the town of Bracebridge, and it's presented to the town of Petroya in celebrating 150 years. Thought that was really nice. And that's actually from one of the town criers that participated with the town criers, and I'll just present this to the clerk for her safekeeping.
Thank you.
And now move on to the announcements. We have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a seconder to approve the first part of those announcements. Moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petroya, to receive this information only, the June 24th, 2024, community announcements as presented.
Any questions from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not this time, your worship. I think that's lots.
Thank you. All right, I'll, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Now at this time, it'll take us to be the Pizza Fest 2024 check presentation. I'd like to ask Counselor Hyatt and Counselor Clark to go to the front, please.
So we're gonna kind of skip to the next step. We have a check for the Petroya Community Fund.
I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Baron to come forward. Executive Director for the Petroya Community Fund to receive this check, please. I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Baron to come forward, Executive Director for the Petrolia Community Fund, to receive this check, please.
And you have something as well that you want?
Thank you, your worship, for an opportunity. It's a much smaller church.
We can cash that one.
Right?
Everyone who attended talked about how well organized it was and what a great time they had. Also want to thank the town for the opportunity to manage fifty-fifty bill. We sold just under six hundred dollars worth of tickets. In theory, there's one winner from a fifty-fifty draw, but I think we have lots of winners because the remaining three hundred dollars we'd like to present to the Petrolia Community Fund.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. I too, just to, before we move on, I want to congratulate all those that were involved. As I mentioned before, the Pizza Fest, we had great weather, it was a huge success. And I mean, from the staff to the volunteers to the sponsors, it was great, so thank you. At this time, I think I'd like to, do we have someone from the Rotary Club present at all?
Oh, we've completed that.
That's great, listen, well, thank you, and pass that back on to the Rotary Club. All right, now I'd like to ask both Councillor Clark and Hyatt to go back down, please. I'd like to ask Mr. Rick Charlebois to go down, please. Mrs. Bullock to come down for, with us as well, please.
Do yourself, your worship.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mentioned before, the Parents for Parks, which was great. I'd like to present him on behalf of the town, towns and staff, just a little certificate of our appreciation of what you've done. And I mean, we, Mr. Charlebois, as I said, we're at the banquet. It was well done, it was great, so this is a no-set order, Laura Pickle is. Okay, I knew this three of you, I thought three of you were coming, but will you see this again, please? Aaron, Harborlock, how do I say that? Harborlock, I was pretty, oh. We can get them all at once if you want. Emily's had a weed. Congratulations. My pleasure. And if you're cast, it's all in the alley, right? So, fun up here, we're gonna picture. Please, Councillor, yeah, get in there, get in behind here, you're all on the back row. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I do. I just wanted, this is really, this is really special to have parents from parks do this, and I know they worked hard for three years or more of everything, from collecting bottles and whatever, and it was great. And I just want to mention to Soft Services at the end, as you're probably aware, they had a check for him for, it was close to seventy-five thousand dollars. And at that presentation of the park, and he looked at me, and he looked at them, and he thought, this is a good cause, and he ripped it up, which I thought is something that just mentioned is worthwhile. But I, I got.
Their check to him, that's what was it, right?
So I want to call upon Mr. Charlebois, I'd like to say, do you want to do that, you're not the mayor, that's in that. Don't go anywhere near it.
Okay, Mr. Charlebois, the floor is yours.
Uh, yes, through you, your worship, hopefully you can hear me. Yeah, about five years ago, these four young mothers, of which we have two of them.
It's called overlord.
Aaron?
Aaron's here, yeah.
They noticed that Petrolia could use an accessible playground at our Greenwood Park. They saw an need, and they took on this major challenge, displaying leadership and an action-oriented focus. They decided they would fundraise to pay for the new playground equipment. The project showed originality, innovation, and excellence. One of the first steps the Parents for Parks took, and I remember this meeting very clearly, was to meet with the mayor and I to explain their project and how, asked how they could work cooperatively with the town. They also set themselves up with the Petrolia Community Fund. You still here, yeah? Who's parent organization is the Sarnia Community Foundation, to help manage their funds. Parents for Parks ran many, many fundraising events and sought out donations everywhere. They planned to take five years to reach their financial goal. However, within two to three years, they'd raised enough funds to start construction. Parents for Parks started, worked closely with the town and the Petrolia Inaskillan Fair Board, as the fair board are the owners of the actual property where the playground equipment is, determined the playground layout, they decided on which playground pieces to order and install for, with community input. The Parks has, has set an excellent example for everyone in our community. The playground is well-used, I've been out there a few times, and it doesn't matter what time of the day, even when it's a little rainy, that people seem to be out there. It's had a very positive impact in our community. Playground includes a water mister, which is well-used, I'm sure these last week or so. A water fountain, benches, a bike rack, and has a parking lot beside it. Actually, I think I've lived in a lot of different places, I'd say that park now would be comparable to a big city that has lots of money. This park, a beautiful park, will encourage kids to hopefully put down their computing devices, enjoy nature in the outdoors.
Phones.
Yeah, and their phones, yes. But Parents for Parks, they're not finished yet. They're now building a pavilion beside the playground. This will be a place for families to, to seek shelter from the hot sun or rain, and provide families with a place for family barbecues or to have a snack. Thank you very much on your efforts, and could you please join me in a round of applause?
Well done, ladies.
I'd just, I'd like to ask, did either one of you ladies like to come forward to say a few words? And, and maybe, just, I don't think we've discussed the actual approximate amount that was spent to build that park. Come up to the podium, yeah, please.
So I think the, just on the park so far, I think it was about three seventy-five, not counting what we're doing with the pavilion. I didn't prepare something to say, but I, I, I do want to say how grateful we are of the recognition of the work. We didn't do it for the recognition. We did it because we truly just wanted our town to be a better place to live in and a better place for our kids. But as I said at our Women of Excellence, we couldn't have done what we did without the support of our community and our families. And the people that have come before us, that led the way, as, as Councillor Welsh has done for us in our childhood growing up, she's somebody I can speak specifically, has inspired us to be active community members. So, again, thank you for the recognition. We do hope that all people of Petrolia feel an investment in their town to make it a nicer place for all of us.
Thank you. All right, this, moving on in the agenda, this brings us to the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Please state your name and address, please.
Sherry Hamilton, two eighty-seven Evergreen Trail, here in Petrolia. I am obviously your representative on the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee. I wanted to thank Liz Welsh for attending the expo, it was very well-received. I have to say, it was a little embarrassing, our booth had no signage of recognition of who we were or what we were doing as a seniors advisory committee. We kind of piecemealed something together that day, but I took it upon myself to ask a lot of the people who attended that expo where they were coming in from. And the majority of them were from the Sarnia Point Edwards area. We did try to get a sponsor for transportation, to get our people here in Petrolia into Sarnia, but we were unable to get a sponsor. The sponsorship level this year for that transportation was two thousand dollars. Speaking on transportation, just to clarify for you, this letter that Councillor Hyatt mentioned, your worship, it, it was a letter, we supported them going forward, we had a presentation, and it's more a feasibility study, which means we're spending thousands of dollars to ask people, do we need it, do you want it, and is it feasible to do it? And I'd say that one of our biggest challenges going forward with that particular letter would be getting people to fill out whatever surveys come forward. The city of Sarnia did a transportation survey themselves, I'm not sure what format they did it in, whether it was online or paper and online. But of over sixty thousand people in Sarnia, they got fifty responses. So I would say, as a town, it would behoove us to get a really good representation. If I have to sit at the farmer's market every Saturday morning, right through till the end of the season, to ask our seniors and our public, do we need transportation, I will do it. Because it's not coming to the forefront, people are unaware, and yet I have had, and we beat this like a dead horse at our meetings every two months, we are desperate for transportation, for young and old. And anyone who attended the county presentation in the fall, once it's here, it just snowballs, it's a fabulous thing getting students to part-time work, to getting employees into businesses in Sarnia, to getting our seniors to the hospitals, to visit family, to get services. So I'd just like to bring that forward and say that everybody benefits from transit. And I certainly hope that if the expo goes ahead next year, we find a way, as a community, to get our people there. Two thousand dollars is not a lot for a sponsorship for transportation. So, just wanted to clarify that for you.
Just a sec, any questions from council? Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention as well that LCDS, Nick Solaris, reached out to the mayor and I, what, a month ago, I guess?
Yes.
A few weeks ago, to connect, because they're in desperate needs of that transportation network as well. And they're, they actually submitted a letter of support as well to the county.
Yeah, just through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I know that years ago, when the first initial intercommunity transit grants were offered, obviously at that time, Petrolia wasn't included or didn't choose to participate, but Sarnia went in with Strathroy. So we kind of didn't get on the bandwagon then, but I think it behooves us to try to get on the bandwagon now. When I lived in Tilsenberg, I sat as the Chair of the Tilsenberg Transit Advisory Committee, and we oversaw the intercommunity transit. And I can tell you, it makes a tremendous impact on the people who live in your town, having the freedom, especially with mental health issues, to be able to get on that bus, to get into the mall, or get into a facility to brighten their day. So, I just wanted to make sure yous were aware, I will be coming before council in the fall to do a full presentation on the seniors advisory committee, and hopefully our Chair, Bill Weber, will come with me that day, and let yous all know, because we're coming to the end of that two-year term.
Just before you go to, and maybe council may not be aware of this, and it's not, I know we need that transportation desperately, there's no doubt in my mind, but I also want council to be aware that the bus going from Sarnia to Strathroy to London, I asked them at County Council to stop at Reese's Corners, so maybe we could participate or get on the bus there. And I asked the MPP, Mr. Bob Bailey, but I couldn't, I didn't get the approval for them to stop. So that was unfortunate, because I thought that's part of it, but that's, that's not what we really, we need that, but we need the actual services to go to Sarnia, to the college, to the malls, those types of things, so. All right, I'll just, one more time, anything from council? If not, thank you for addressing council. Okay, that'll move us to the financial report, there's a motion before you to approve the accounts. I'll ask for a move and a seconder to approve the accounts, move by Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Hyatt. Councillor Harris not present, so I will ask the clerk just to read that motion.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, general financial accounts.
Any questions? All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the, the accounts from May eighth to the eighteenth of June. And I see Deputy Mayor Field is declaring a conflict of interest, and I note he has moved away from the seat. I'll ask for a move and a seconder to approve that motion before you, move by Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Lampton sanitation accounts.
Any questions from council? All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. And please note the Deputy Mayor Field is back in his chair. That'll take us now to, we have a report from Mrs. Jessica Smith, Manager of Legislative Services Deputy Clerk, regarding business licenses and signed permits issued. I'll ask for a move and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Councillor Patel, seconded by Councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the Manager of Legislative Services Deputy Clerk, Human Resource Manager's report, dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding business licenses and signage permits issued.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, thank you, your worship.
Thank you. We'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to finance, we have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO Treasurer, regarding the two thousand twenty-four first quarterly financial report. You have a motion there before you, I'll ask for a move and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer, dated the twenty-fourth of June, two thousand twenty-four, regarding the two thousand twenty-four first quarter financial results.
Any questions from council? Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add? Oh, sorry, Councillor Hyatt.
I'm just, thank you, sorry, through you, just for a future reference, in the CapEx projects, when the project is complete, can we identify it on the list so that we kind of know how the balance is, how the balance is resolving?
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of them are under budget, and I don't, I don't know if the project is actually complete or not.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Can we do that, Mr. Charlebois, please?
Definitely.
Okay, do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Charlebois?
Just, this is, takes us to the end of March, we're in good shape. We're a little behind in doing all the year-end work from two thousand twenty-three. That's one of the reasons why the auditors are waiting till the next council to present. But we're catching up, and we'll have the Q two, which is to the end of June at, well, it'll be the meeting after the eighth of July, so it'll be first one in September.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, all those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to operations, we have a report from Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services Clerk, Deputy Operations, regarding petition for the Drainage Works Section Seventy-eight application, Grenon Zizen Drain. I'll ask for a move and a seconder to put that motion on the floor, move by Councillor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask, Mrs. Pearson, do you have anything you'd like to add to that or explain that?
I'm not sure there's anything additional to what's in the report, but I'm happy to ask any questions. This is the preliminary initial start, when a petition is filed, under the Act, we do need to respond to that petition as it can be filed by anyone.
Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Okay. All right. Councillor Welsh?
Um, just to clarify, a petition is a request?
Correct. It's like, it's the initial stage to identify something that a municipality and/or a property owner may wish to seek additional opportunity under the Drainage Act for.
Councillor Hyatt?
Just, is the consultant, the normal consultant we use for these projects or is it?
Go ahead.
Your worship to councillor Hyatt. It is not. Our drainage engineer is Garrett's Engineering. Unfortunately, he does have a conflict on this, so Spriet would be our, our next available engineer.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Councillor Hyatt, are you okay with that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Oh, sorry, I didn't have that read, did I? Would you please read that first before I call the vote?
Sure, that the council of the town of Petrolia received the report dated June 24th, 2024 from the Director of Legislative Services Clerk Deputy Operations Regarding the Petition for Drainage Works by Owners. And that council accepts the petition as filed on May 27th, 2024, and that council appoints John M. Spriet to make an examination of the area requiring drainage and prepare a report on the matter in conjunction with the petition received for Part Lot 14 and 15 of Concession 10.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation Facilities, Regarding the Rec Program Cancellation of Pickleball. And there's a motion before you. We'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated June 24th, 2024, regarding the cancellation of the trial pickleball program.
And at this time, I'd like to ask, Mrs. Bullock, can you give us a few more details on the reasons why, please?
Yes, of course, your worship. We've been having issues with the paint lines that we put on for the pickleball courts. And it's been affecting the ball hockey program that's been going on at the arena for 20 plus years. And it's greatly affected their game. And since there are other places to play pickleball, we've decided to just put a hold on that for the moment. Also, we have a couple upcoming projects that are going to kind of render the, the floor out of service while we look at our dehumidifier and change that out as well. So we're just kind of putting a hold on it for this point in time and we'll do some research on other options for, for future.
Thank you, Mrs. Bullock. Any questions from council? I must be getting tired. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. We also have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation Facilities, Regarding the Arena Dehumidifiers Quotes. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that a motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated June 24th, 2024, regarding the quote results for the replacement of the northeast dehumidifier. And that council approved the award of the job to all systems mechanical in the amount of $34,420 plus HST.
And as council is aware, that was our lowest quote. Any questions from council? Councillor Hyatt?
The question, sorry, through you. Just wondering if the dehumidifier plus the catwalk extension will still remain under the CapEx budget?
I'll ask Mrs. Bullock, can you speak to that, please?
Through you, your worship, to councillor Hyatt. Yes, we expect that with the catwalk extension, we should be just under budget for the total project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Again, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. There is no closed session tonight. We'll move, this is the second opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. You have A, which is a tabled item. And as noted here, this will be the last time it will be listed on as far as being tabled. But I believe we're still waiting for a report from a lawyer before we go further on that. And on B, establishing a Scotiabank Subcommittee. There's a couple minor adjustments before I talk to the motion. My recommendation in the motion is for councillor Hyatt and deputy mayor Joel Field. Joel Field will be the lead. Sitting on that committee will be the CAO, Mr. Rick Charlebois, Mrs. Julie Bullock, and Mrs. Mandy Pearson. And the report will come back in September from the Subcommittee. Now, you've got a motion before you. I'd like a move and a second to approve that motion or to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is the council of the town of Petrolia appoint councillor Chad Hyatt and deputy mayor Joel Field as liaison members to the Scotiabank Building Subcommittee of Council.
Any questions from council? I also just want to remind council, there is a public meeting we're having on Wednesday, where people will have the opportunity to come out and speak. But I want to make it clear that the decision will be made by this council. So even though they may have good inputs, they will be passed on to the Subcommittee and they'll review that with a recommendation back. Okay? No further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the first and second by, reading of the bylaws. I'll ask for a move and a second.
Excuse me, may I ask a quick procedural question? I'm just wondering with the, with respect to item A, how is that brought back? Like if it's, is it still a tabled item? It just is removed from the agenda?
I'll let Mrs. Pearson speak to that.
Uh, through your worship to councillor Welsh, yes. After three, three attempts on the agenda, it dies on the floor.
And again, it will probably still come back once we get a recommendation from the lawyer. Okay?
So to clarify that, your worship, the motion that was presented to council with that report dies on the floor. Anything else would be a new item coming forward to council.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right. I'll ask for a move and a second to have those bylaws read a first and second time. Did we do that? Moved by deputy mayor Field, seconded by councillor Patel. Any discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, signed, sealed, and numbered. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. Now I will ask the clerk to read that for his final reading, please.
That is for the bylaw number 31 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to authorize the execution of an agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario for the purpose of receiving funds under the Canada Community Build Fund, be read a third time and finally passed. That bylaw number 32 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia, to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including June 24th, 2024, be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor of passing those bylaws, opposed, that motion carries. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor Field. All those in favor, that motion carries. Boy, that hand would have passed.